And that's fine. But for tonight, or for this afternoon, they can't take it, get me all messed up. It looks probably outside right now. For this afternoon, while we're in a public debate here, I want to keep it simple for everyone. So regardless of where your feelings are on this matter, we want to discuss the matter. And we don't want to discuss individuals or people or have comments about individuals. So I would ask you to remember that if there becomes an issue or we get off track, we'll gently remind and then ask you to depart from us. We want to hear folks, we want to hear everybody to cheer. And we now have all five board members. We have one who's out of town just called in. So those are the rules of engagement you might say all of the afternoon. And I hope that's real with everyone. If anybody has a question about those five items, anyone feel there's anything unreasonable there before we get started? Well, we have a full vote of confidence, so y'all can all help any equal member out of the room. All right, I'm going to ask that we begin, call me your or ask Mr. Darrow to think we pray us in for the meeting. And we'll see you later.
And I want to thank you once again, God, for the opportunity just to be alive. Oh, thank you, God, for your grace and your mercy, God. And we come to do the power of Jesus, God, and we're thinking, he's on all that she had to start up to do, God. And we want to look down on everyone that's safely chilling and look down on what is going on. And we'd like you to bless the council and the whole world of Jesus' name, amen.
Good standing, y'all, Mr. Slay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I want to thank everyone for your attendance this evening. I'm here prior to getting going for the meeting. But I do want to introduce our speakers. And I'm looking at my list and I am seeking, have you heard of Mr. Ronnie?
Um, I have not.
Congressman Ronnie Dowell, former congressman from nearby, is set to speak. We will not get arrived, so we've got six speakers on the list. Representative Kent McCarty. Yes, I believe that you're there with us. Representative Kent McCarty represents our district and the state legislature in Jackson. He has some familiarity with this bill and he's been kind of involved with this this afternoon by Zoom. So if we can pull him up on a large screen and welcome him and kind of get this underway. We'll come back to Mr. Ronnie when he appears.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Can y'all hear me okay? Am I close enough to the microphone?
Hang on just one second. Let me see. Can we switch this guy? Okay, can't try more for us.
All right, can y'all hear me better now?
Just come out of your computer.
What does that mean?
That should be the display, sound preferences.
Sorry, y'all. It is on my end.
In particular, now, this is my life. Just, we gotta try and do this. Thankfully, if you're with it.
That's it.
That should be it.
Give it a try now.
All right, is that better?
That's good.
All right, great. All right, well, thank y'all, you know, for having me, inviting me to come join you virtually today. I wish I could be there in person, but we are wrapping up the end of our session and it is busier than ever. So I also broke my leg a couple of months ago, so I can't actually drive. So I am stuck here until somebody else heads south and that probably won't be until tomorrow. So thanks for making accommodations for me to join virtually and answer whatever questions y'all have. I wanted to take the time I have today to talk about some of the specifics on the taxation and a few of the other common questions that I know people have had about how the program's going to go moving forward, as well as address some of the things that are not spelled out in the bill for things that we're waiting for guidance on from the Department of Health. And then, of course, if anybody has any questions that I can answer, I would love to answer those. I am, obviously, I'm still at the Capitol, but I'm free for a little bit if there are any follow-up questions, anything that I talked about. So to just kind of start off with the tax side of it, there are, there are some spelled out, some taxes and fees that are spelled out in the bill. And then there's still, there are some that are not quite fully fleshed out in the bill yet. And so I'll talk about the differences there. The sales tax in particular, that's on purchases at dispensaries, at medical marijuana dispensaries, would divert back to the city, just like any other sales tax does. So you'll, the city would receive a portion of that, you know, should it be opted into the program. There is a 5% excise tax that is also charged on the cultivation side of it. That, as of now, lapses back into the state general fund. So that would not go back to any locality that has a growing facility or cultivation facility operating in its bounds. The other, the other side of it are the permits and fees. There's a lot of discussion about the permits and fees that are paid to the State Department of Revenue for licensing. But there's also provisions in the bill that allow for local localities to have their own taxes and fees, our permits and fees on businesses, just like you do any other business. So if you charge, you know, for my business, it operates in Lamar County within the city of Hattiesburg, we pay, you know, fees to have a business in the city. It would be no different for this. So that applies to the medical cannabis establishments is what they're called in the bill. Medical cannabis establishments refer to whether it's the grower, a cultivator, a processor, a research facility, any of that. You know, dispensary, you would be able to charge a standard fee for issuing that license to the business. Those are really the three main revenue points. And again, I mentioned the excise tax right now in the bill, it goes into the general fund. There's always talk of, you know, changing that down the road. And since this is a typical, you know, this is normal state law, we're able to amend that in the future. But as of now, that is, that is how the bill is spelled out. So when the program goes live, that excise tax is charged on the cultivators will go back to the state and the general fund. That's the state general fund, not the locality general fund. A couple of other things, I guess it may be easier if anybody has a question about the tax portion. Anybody, you know, on the board, anything has a question about that, I'm happy to answer those. But I think that's, that part is pretty straightforward as it is in the bill now.
Yeah, just for clarification, this is Joel Lofton. Where you did say we make established fees, you also said it must be the standard fees. So while the town can establish fees for a medical cannabis establishment, it has to be in line with what we, what we assess any other business, correct?
That, that's right. So obviously, yeah, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that. So when you, for each of the different types of medical cannabis establishments, which again, that, that's the broad term we use to describe all of the, you know, whether it's the dispensary or the growing facility or processing, anything like that. You know, depending on how the fee structure is in the town or locality that we're talking about, you know, a lot of times in some areas that's set by revenue, in some areas it's set by, you know, number of employees, things like that. It would have to follow that same structure, but it could obviously, in that same, you know, regard, be different as you go across the medical cannabis establishment. So there may be a different, you know, qualification for cultivators than there is for dispensaries, things like that. But it does in the bill, yes, it does have to be in line with what your normal business license is, whatever your normal business license structure is. So that would be, you know, it would very obviously town by town, county by county. But that is, yes, that's part of it. Yeah, thank you for clarifying that, Joel. I appreciate you making sure that I was clear on that. Any other questions about those, those tax things? Okay. A couple of other things that I thought, you know, maybe that are a little bit, not necessarily vague in the bill, but that may, it may be helpful to provide some color on, as far as the local ordinance are concerned. There is a, and I know a lot of people, you know, there's, when you start looking at right now, there's a thousand, these facilities can be a thousand feet from a school, church, or childcare facility. And that we've, I've talked to several that have said that there really is a limit to, when you look at the zoning and those provisions, there's a really limited, I guess, area in the city where these facilities could go. There is an option for the city to issue a waiver, as long as it does not get closer than 500 feet from a school, church, or childcare facility. So that if that were something, you know, that the city was interested, that is in there as well. There is also some questions about the zoning, I know as well. It is spelled out in the bill for the, on the cultivation, I believe, the cultivation side of it. Those can be located in agriculture or industrial zones only unless a, they are allowed to operate in a commercial zone area if the city will issue, you know, a waiver or allow them to do so. So they would, they would, there's still some discretion, I guess is what I'm trying to say. There's some discretion for the city or for any city or town or county to not allow those to operate in commercially zoned areas. It just really depends on if, you know, the situation, if you choose to do that or not. I know there's a lot, I've spoken with a lot of smaller, we had a group of smaller town mayors up here that were kind of talking through some of these same issues with a group of us up here. And some of them had addressed that in different ways, those that had not opted in or had not opted, or those that had opted out, whether that be zoning changes or, you know, things like that. There were, that was their, their workaround, I guess, if they chose to participate. So that's how that works. The dispensaries, obviously, they're able to operate in a broader, they're not as restricted to zoning. But as far as the cultivation side, that's how that is. And I bring special attention to that solely because at one point during the process of this bill all coming together, there was, there was a time, there was an amendment made to add commercial for the cultivators and I believe for processing as well, to add that to the automatically, you know, statutorily approved zones they can operate in. And I know that was a point of contention. You know, I personally was not, was not for that amendment. And there was a lot of localities that were very concerned about that. So that did change in the final version of the bill. And I'm sure that, you know, that's been, that's been publicized with the, all the reports of what's in the bill, definitely. But I just wanted to make sure, because I know there are some people that did not get the updated copy of it once it was done. So that, that's an important thing. Do anybody have any questions about the ordinances or the zoning or any clarification on that?
Kent, you're gonna get tired of me, but I do.
Never, never.
You make clear that a waiver may be requested. Will you clarify who the waiver has to be requested of and who may grant that waiver?
As for the, for the zoning?
For the thousand feet, it's a thousand feet, but you're making a waiver to 500. Is that the municipality grants the waiver or the subject of the waiver, such as the church, the school, or the daycare?
The, my understanding of that, let me pull up the bills, I can make sure that I tell you exactly correct. But I, my understanding of that is that it goes to the municipality or, you know, whatever jurisdiction. But I want to make sure I get that right for you. Let's see. Let's see, I've got it pulled up here.
I agree, previously had been that it was to the facility, but that is an important point for clarification. Would it be allowed to be drawn in?
So the, to answer that question, the, the actual, the actual text of the bill, that, that waiver for the 500 feet is limited to, to someone, a business, you know, whoever, person, business, whatever, that has acquired the land before this, this law went into effect for this purpose. So it's actually, it's very specific. And I think it is honestly designed to allow some flexibility for people that, you know, after 65 initially, 65 initially passed, there were, there was a huge influx of, of activity, I guess, to prepare businesses and things like that for, you know, for the program. And those provisions were not in that bill. So I think they just wanted, we wanted to provide a little flexibility for businesses and for individuals that had acquired land. So that's specifically for those who had acquired it before. If they meet that criteria, that has to be, the waiver has to be approved by the church, daycare, or childcare facility, as well as a licensing agency. So the way I read this, everybody would have to sign off. That is one of the areas where, you know, that, some of that could be interpreted by the Department of Health. But the statute does, again, it is limited to those who acquired real property before, before the medical marijuana program was established. And they have to receive approval from the school, childcare facility, or church and from the licensing agency. So that, that, I know that's kind of confusing. It's a very technical, I guess, provision in the bill, but that, that is, that is how it is explained in the bill. Does that make sense, Mayor?
Yeah, it boils down to the church, school, or daycare, because if they don't approve it, then nobody else can.
That's right. Yeah, that's right. The church, school, or childcare facility would, would ultimately, if they don't, if they're not on board, then they, it does not, it does not move forward.
Or in the opposite direction too, that if church agrees to it and, you know, manufacturing facility agrees, or the office says no.
I had a little trouble, is that a question for me? I had a little trouble hearing that one.
That was a clarification, I'd like to make, you didn't hear that? Yes, sorry about that. I have one more note. In section 19, you were speaking of the zoning. And we've had some discussion of zoning here. In that, as the bill has written, a large percentage of our residential is also zoned agriculture. And that could potentially present an issue. So the thought is about rezoning. Section 19 specifically says municipal or county may enact ordinances or regulations not in conflict with this chapter. In your opinion, if we establish an ordinance changing zoning or a section of property so that it could not establish a medical cannabis facility, is that in conflict or is that not in conflict?
No, my understanding, just in talking, because this has been, this has been something that I think a lot of, a lot of towns have had this, questions about this. And in my conversation with our attorneys in preparation for this Zoom tonight, they, they expressed a firm belief that it would not be. I understand the way it's written, the, the potential there. But in talking with both the authors of the bill and the attorneys that we have here at the Capitol, the, the intent is not to keep people from zoning, especially, you know, in situations like, like you guys have, where you have places that are zoned, you know, both, I think it would be more, there could be more egregious examples, but I think things like this, you know, I specifically mentioned this example because I know we've just been talking with some others in some role about this. That was a question I've already gotten. So we did speak about that and, and it was, it was their firm belief that that would not be the case. But again, I do, I do understand the question.
So to clarify, the town couldn't change zoning from that, a growing facility or dispensary from setting up in a residential area?
That's correct. I mean, especially, you know, this would be one of those things where the, you know, it's more about the intent, I believe. And I think in this case, you know, you would see that this is clearly a residential area that's both zoned, like as their mayor mentioned, zoned agricultural, agricultural and residential. And again, that's, I've been talking with them, I'm obviously not an attorney, and talking with them just to, you know, to make sure that that was an accurate, that would be a fair statement to make. They did indicate that that, that is already happened in some areas, happening in some areas and would be allowed under the provisions in this section. So again, you know, I was talking with the mayor about this earlier. There are some things in this legislation, as there are with all pieces of legislation that come out of the Capitol, that do leave some room, and I wanted to talk about that as well. If we've got time for that, there are some things that are left to the Department of Health and Department of Revenue to kind of firm up. And that is the case with everything, because once we get these bills into law, especially with things like those, things change rapidly. And if you have to have everybody up here in agreement to make an amendment on something, that could take you, you know, years, unfortunately. So we do, in almost every legislation that we find, when we have something that's left to, you know, anybody's, if you have like the Department of Health over certain aspects of things, they'll be charged with making rules and regulations. Because this is, they'll be the ones enforcing, you know, these types of things. So there will be things that, that are clarified, absolutely. There will be things that are clarified. And there are some things that the Department of Revenue and the Department of Health will be charged with, with, you know, not just clarifying, but writing the regulations for. And again, I did want to talk about that briefly, if we, if we have time for that. But does that answer your question?
Yes, I suppose. We'll let you move on. I don't want to get us off track here. I said we stay on track, so please proceed and then we'll be moving on to our next, once you're pleased.
Okay. Yeah, and again, this part is pretty straightforward. I just, I know there was, there's a lot, been a lot of questions about what is and is not spelled out in the bill. And there are some things, I think, like, like the topic we just were discussing, that I think we're not, you know, that are, that there's still some clarifying to be done. But there are a few things that are, that are left to the Department of Revenue and the Department of Health. And I'll just briefly talk about those things. So the chief of those among the, for the Department of Health is the process by which they can add debilitating conditions to the list of eligible conditions. That's the main, I would say, one of the main things the department is charged with. That is left to them to, to develop that process. The statewide process for licensing and applications is for the, to the Department of Revenue, they're charged with developing that. With the Department of Health, that part is still not complete. The governing of the operations of the growth facilities and the processing and things like that, just like you would with the Department of Health with restaurants and any other facility that is responsible for making anything that's ingestible, anything like that. They're developing that process as they would with, you know, restaurants or, you know, coffee shops. In my case, I deal with the Department of Health quite a bit. So that's one thing they're still working on. The process to ensure health and safety of patients with the dispensaries and with the processing and with the growth facilities is another area that they're still working on, the regulations for. And then finally, the several areas of oversight. And there are, these are spelled out all in much more detail in the bill, but these are the broad categories. And if anybody has a specific question about it, I'm happy to go into that as well. But oversight for record keeping, security requirements, standards for processing. And transport and storage, transport and storage are bigger things that the Department of Health is still working on guidelines for. And I believe that the, there's still a little bit of time until they have to have all that done. And the law technically takes effect at the beginning of the fiscal year, which is July 1, I believe it's, the fiscal year is when it starts. So they've got a little bit of time on some of this stuff, but those are the main things that they're still working on. Most of the other things are spelled out in the bill. And, you know, obviously, like we already discussed with the zoning, there's some that I think people are unsure how to interpret. And those, you know, those questions will be answered as well. But those are the large categories that the Department of Health and Department of Revenue are working on regulations and guidelines for.
All right, thanks so much. Anyone have any question, Mr. McCarty, on any of the matters of these steps, John?
I have one, and I may have not heard. Was cultivation allowed in industrial zoned properties or is it just agriculture?
It is allowed in industrial as well. So the agriculture and industrial are, those are both allowed under the statute. And then the commercial, the commercial zoning, you can use commercially zoned property for that if the, whatever locality approves that, they have discretion there.
Did you hear that, Kent?
I did not. I could hear bits and pieces of it. I'm sorry.
She's asking about the security, like what types of security would be like a minimum requirement or anything like that that's in the bill right now?
Yeah, so as it is in the bill right now, there's not, that is one of the things that specifically that the Department of Revenue and Department of Health, they're going to have to develop regulations for that. I can't remember the exact language that's in the bill, but it basically, I think it may, Joel, you may know, you probably know the exact word. It's something to the effect of adequate or, yeah, adequate security measures.
Lot or secure, was the term I like to use. Lot or secure, I think actually, what's it?
That's, yeah, that's right. So that, that part of it is still, is still pending, the guidelines that will come down from the Department of Revenue and Department of Health. For, and then that goes for all aspects of the bill, whether that be for the dispensaries, the transport, processing, any of that. That, that is still, that, that part is still in process.
Ongoing conversation for Department of Health and the things they're proposing, the things along the lines of alarm systems and motion tracking cameras versus like a closed circuit security system where the entire process can be used by any legislature, any legislature body outside facilities. I think we discussed, I've seen a lot of things that were far less accurate. But that's, that's the things they're actually discussing currently.
Is there any type of like industry standard that y'all have discussed in legislature talk that you are expecting?
Well, there's, there is, as far as some parts of it, as like the seed to sale program that's implemented or that's required under the legislation, that basically would track everything from the time it is a seed brought in until it's sold. That is spelled out and that is, that has been used in a few other states that have passed similar legislations. And that is spelled out in the bill. But there's nothing as far as, and I would say that is above industry standard as far as safety for that, for, you know, as far as that goes. But as far as the security provisions that we've kind of been talking about with the dispensaries and other facilities, that legislatively, we have not addressed that. We've left that to the Department of Health for them to kind of interpret, since they're the body who's responsible for enforcing, you know, any of the regulations. We've, we've let them, you know, work in concert with other departments of health. And I know that they've been having conversations, I just in casual conversation with members of the, the board that are, and people that are with the Department of Health. I know that they've had conversations with other states that have done similar things. And I don't, but I don't know specifically, you know, where, where they're at as far as what they have so far. But there will be a time, you know, when all this comes together for public comment on the stuff that the Department of Health, Health puts out. So I would, I would, you know, obviously encourage those that are interested in that to keep an eye on that process. But, but now, as of this point, legislatively, we've left that to the department. And that's typically how we handle all these things, because as technology improves and things change, for us to come back and amend legislation is a very inefficient, especially we're only in session three months or three and a half months out of the year. It's a very inefficient way for us to handle. So we typically leave that up to whatever jurisdiction is in charge of enforcement. And that's what we've done with this as well, with the Department of Health.
All right, one final question on that, forgive my ignorance, but since the locality can issue its own permits and have its own requirements, could the locality decide to have a more rigorous security standard than whatever the Department of Revenue issues?
That is a good question. I actually, I could look and then get back to you on that one. I want to make sure my, my, from a basic understanding, there are limits to how far a, how far a locality can go on certain things. And I want to make sure that I get that correct. So I will double check that and send that answer to, to Sabrina or somebody who can, who can make sure that you get that. But I know that there are, there is some flexibility for localities to issue their own rules and guidelines on that kind of thing, up to a certain limit. So, and I think for some of the things, I know the language is within a reasonable, you know, something like that, within a reasonable bound or something. And again, I know that's relatively vague, but I'll get, I'll double check that and get back to you on that one, to be sure.
One thing to consider is with the amount of investments they're going to do to these facilities, it's going to be in facilities' own interest to secure their own, own facility. There is nobody that's going to spend $1 million on a facility and use a padlock. There, there is nobody that's going to spend one million dollars on a facility and use that padlock. That's not going to happen, I'm sorry. I know from an insurance standpoint, there's only like three different companies that actually insure this throughout the whole country. And they require pretty extreme security system even issue policies. A lot of, just a lot of, they won't, they won't enter this facility without security cameras, you know, proper, properly locked and set up. I don't know, I can get regulations on what the insurance company's for. I know it'd be nice to get that.
But Kent, I don't want to cut you off. We do have other speakers waiting in the wings and we promise each of them in about a time, if, if, if one is satisfied thus far with what we've got, let's move on to our next. Because again, if you'd like to stay online with us, we'd love to have you here. When they circle back, we'll put.
Sure, I'll, I can stay. I've got a, I had a meeting at 5:30 that I pushed back to make sure I could be here and have plenty of time for y'all. So I'll hang out on, on here as long as I can. And if y'all need me to weigh in on anything, and also too, if, if there's anybody that has a specific question, Sabrina has my cell phone number and as does Mary. You're welcome to just give that out to somebody if they have a question. I'm happy to talk to them about it or text about it or whatever, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever anybody needs, as long as that can keep us from all being here all night. You know, I know everybody's got things I need to comment on. So feel free to share that with anybody and I'm happy to answer their questions after tonight or tomorrow or whenever. So thank y'all again for, for letting me join you and having me on to talk about a couple of these things.
So much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Back to.
Thomas is on standby that I can call him if we have a specific question about zoning, which I think we just kind of went through.
So we've covered some of those questions from the legislative end. We have, without Mr. Reeves, without Mr. Gregory, without Mr. Schau, we are to Brian Super, Super online with us there.
He is.
All right, Mr. Brian Super has requested to have the opportunity to speak with us tonight. He is Assistant District Attorney from the 12th District of Oklahoma, where they going through this process not too many years ago. So he's kind of familiar with some of the outcomes there. And he's been able to provide some information from, you know, what does it look like once it's in place? And I know Mississippi looked at a lot of progress, a lot of other states. I think they looked over Oklahoma. So Mr. Super, I'll give you the floor. We've allotted about 15 minutes for each of the questions. So if you'd like to go ahead, thanks for being with us.
Thank you very much. I tell you, I actually will update my bio. I'm actually currently the General Counsel of the Oklahoma Bureau of Narcotics. It's kind of the DEA for the state. I began that job in January. I worked there before, both as a lawyer, as an agent. And I'm the immediate past president of our State Narcotics Officers Association. So I've, I've been in drug enforcement, public safety for 26 years in May. And, and what I can tell you about is our experience here. And it ain't good. It, it ain't good by a long shot. When I left the Bureau, weed was illegal. When I've come back, it is every bit of two thirds of my time. We've had to hire, have an entire division with what we call a chief, three AICs, which is Agents in Charge in a huge division. It is the single biggest incoming thing we have now. Again, it was work we didn't have to do before. So what we've seen is a tremendous influx of illegal activity. And the, the medical cannabis laws, the paradigm issues nothing more than, and I say nothing more, I'll give you the numbers, but as a front for black market activity. And so to kind of give you an idea, we're, we're, we're kind of drafting a white paper now to kind of explain where we're at. But currently in Oklahoma, we have one, 8,137 grows. That's 8,000 cultivators in Oklahoma. We have 380,000, 38,069 cardholders. She's a very high portion with a lot of out of state people that come here to get, we get an out of state card. We're like twice the card rate of California and Oregon have been in the weed game for quite some time, have more weed smokers than we do. But that's how many cardholders we have. Even assuming those numbers, there's a University of Pennsylvania study shows the average joint size for marijuana smoker, marijuana cigarette is 0.32 grams. So with two basic assumptions, about 20%, it varies. Typically, when states legalize marijuana, the daily use rates go up, especially among children, among young people, 25, 35. But so generally, about one in five marijuana smokers does so daily. Now, if you assume that our grows, these marijuana grows have sometimes 150 hoop houses, they produce thousands and thousands of pounds, their entire farms. But let's just assume every grown Oklahoma produces a mere 1,000 pounds. Let's assume that every cardholder smokes a joint each and every day. And we have five times the rate of daily marijuana users. Our weed demand, our demand for marijuana grown at processors, the legal demand from these, if you assume everyone uses daily, would be met with 1.2% of our grows. And what we've seen is, is probably, that's about right, 98% of our grows are illegal. Since we've done this, we have organized crime syndicates that have come from 13 different nations that operate here. You can put in laws about residents and we have straw ownership where we pay people a few thousand dollars to be a pretend owner and just have a, and use it to ship it all over the country. They, they've become, there's a huge demand for marijuana. So what it leads to are a lot of robberies at dispensaries and robberies at grows. We had just two this weekend, our agency worked, one of the people there at the grow died of a heart attack when several people went in in black clothing. Now again, this was just like a few days, this last weekend, so five days ago, one of the guys died of a heart attack, our agents worked that. And it was one where they had dressed up as police and just kind of robbing, because there's such a nationwide demand for the weed. And what is, what the single biggest thing, and I'll tell you that, look, this, what we're experiencing happened in California and the West Coast and Colorado. Like anything else, I will tell you, if you want to have West Coast social outcomes, adopt West Coast policies, whether there's criminal justice reform, marijuana laws. And so what California saw several years ago, and we were talking about this, we had DEA that said California's upset because all this promised revenue and taxation, which is such a, a fraction of the overall budget when it's revenue. Not, that compares nothing to the government expense that happens. But California saw, because of all the black market front, the, the notion and idea that this would be a bash of people to legally grow marijuana, there's just not that big of a demand. Currently in Oklahoma, we have, again, 8,184 marijuana grows. We have 2,284 dispensaries, which means we have three and a half tons, over three and a half tons, the concentration of wholesalers to retail outlets. There's no economic model in history where that's ever worked. And that's because most of these grows are kind of, again, a front for the illegal activity. The single biggest impact, nothing, nothing has happened in my entire lifetime. So this time at the, at the legislature, about two years of this, it's been a sea change. Go back a couple of years and people says, will of the peoples, the will of the people to do this. And there's this whole political campaign to go through and do this, which happens, ours is by popular vote. Sometimes it happens at the legislature. And, and go back two years, nobody wanted to touch it. Well, it has become such a, a, has a negative impact, especially on rural Oklahoma. For a few things, one, it has driven land prices through the roof. There's competition where people come in, pay over asking price to get the land to come in there and to grow with the marijuana farms. People don't want to buy land because they don't know if a weed farm's going to pop up next to them. This last session, the two of the groups that are actually at the legislature pushing for reforms, the ones that are the Farm Bureau and the Cattleman Association, two rural organizations, really, they represent rural interests because it's affected both land prices, the, the demands on water to grow this high grade weed. It is a huge demand and it's impacted the real water table. Sometimes they, they will actually shut them off and not do that. Additionally, it has had a major impact on the electrical grid because of all of the, the, the electrical demands are not enough to actually supply what they want for the indoor grow to get. And even on outdoor farms, look at the hoop houses, they'll, they'll use those at times, but they'll, the, the real money is when they kind of get, the, the biggest demand for marijuana and weed is the high potency THC. If you go back to, you know, the 90s, when I started law enforcement, the good weed from Mexico was 3% THC. Flower weed is well over 20% now. That came from California by putting, by, when they legalized in 96, they put all their effort into making super high grade weed. And that's why smoking one joint today is like smoking seven from the 90s. Probably 1% to 2% is what the weed, the THC content was before. Has nothing to even say about how they kind of get into concentrates and edibles and things like that. So that, that's kind of really what we've seen. I'll tell you this, and I'll, I'll answer any questions. I, I want you to, I get nothing out of this, okay? I, I, I would want someone to tell us what we've experienced here. It is, first of all, in, in cities, it's different. There are dispensaries everywhere and you see those, not a lot, there's not a lot of activity there. Nothing like kind of at a liquor store. But to give you kind of an idea, I had, when I was in my DA's office, we had a, had a grant and I would report some of that. And for one, my PowerPoint here, from one, one grant year to the next. The last year I, before I left in December for this job, one of our rural counties, my three counties, I was just outside of Tulsa, there were 116 commercial marijuana growers operating in this small county. For the, for, there was one grow for every 10 licensed patients, massive farms, one for every 10 licensed patients. What we saw in one year is, is we had a 83% increase in wholesale growers in that year. And we had a 12% decrease in dispensaries. And again, that doesn't make sense unless you know what's really going on. And it's because there's a demand to produce this. There's just, there's just not that many people that smoke that much weed that you have to do that. It's just not the reality. You can say it all day long, it's not the truth. So we haven't seen here. And we talked with Colorado and, and essentially Colorado, what happens is they, they get, when it gets hot in California, you have Colorado, Colorado, they, they get, they, they create these units like we did, make it's not as easy to do because law enforcement catches up. And then, then they move. I hope they don't move to Mississippi. We're trying to do that, but that, that's what we've seen historically in every single place. And so I say, don't, don't, don't take my word for it, okay? Just randomly, anybody on this call, anyone that, that believes in this, call a county commissioner in any rural county in Oklahoma. Say, how has it been for you and your land prices? Call anyone in law enforcement. I can tell you, as the past president of the State Narcotics Association, the biggest law enforcement association that's in the state, we're the largest conference, without exception, they will tell you that our marijuana laws have been a disaster to public safety. And then again, it's just not impacting what we do, but it also impacts, again, the, the life, especially in rural Oklahoma, kind of with the, the land prices. I will tell you, people, when they just drive down the road and smell the marijuana and what it does. We did an operation recently where we had just eight licensed grows, okay? These are, these are licensed grows. They're operating illegally, sending it all over the country. We seized 131,000 plants, 7,000 pounds of processed marijuana, quarter million dollars in cash. And, you know, we had, had done that. Again, those are just one, a, a small percentage, okay? That was one tenth of 1% of the grows that, that we have. So, so anyway, I, I would be happy to, to take any questions. Again, I haven't, I, someone sent me the bill, it's, I haven't read that. If there's any differences, I can't comment on, on the content of the bill. I will tell you that in each and every place, no exception of Arkansas that puts such restrictions as like, like one or two people that are actually growing. It has been used kind of as a, a front, the, the crime. There's such a demand for people to have marijuana on, on the black market and to sell it. Everything that's been assured to us by the legalization, even from kind of libertarian type thinkers, that this will remove this, the forbidden fruit thing and legalize it, it just hasn't panned out. Not here, not anyplace else. So again, I, I get nothing out of this. First thing you always look at in, in looking at someone is, is what is their motive? Nobody's hiring me, I'm here. I had plans with my family tonight, but it's important enough for my director to kind of just communicate to you what we have experienced here in doing this. I will tell you that if, if we don't, they, when they wrote the, the state question here, again, that they do not give people the option to opt out. Colorado, two thirds of the people have opted out. So if there's any questions about that, again, what we've experienced here, again, that's, that's kind of my wheelhouse in terms of how these operate and, and what they do. It's a, it's a new type of, of operation that we've seen with doing this. But again, we've, the cartels have come out and even the cartels in South America are now, are now operating here, mostly organized crime from other seas has come over here. And that's what we've seen. So anything I can, any further questions, I'd be happy to take those.
We do, we do have several questions. I'm going to try to get one at a time. I'm going to ask our mayor first, if you want to.
Yeah. Seat and sale tracking program in Oklahoma, sir.
Did you hear that? Seat and sale, yeah.
Oh, CD, I'm so glad you brought, I took another, that seat to sale, yeah, I heard seat to sale. Guess what? We have a seat to sale tracking system. And this is, all, all the uncertainties you're coming up with right now, that, that is something that creates a problem. The, the seat to sale tracking system, I'm sorry?
When, when did you implement your program, your seat to sale?
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's great. The seat to sale sec- tracking program should have gone into effect two and a half years ago, August of whatever that was, two and a half years ago. They actually, it was a law firm that actually filed an injunction and got an injunction. It has yet to take effect. So we go in there, there's no records of what, so, so there are, there's a lot of money behind this. And so what happens is with these kind of questions in the law, somebody files a lawsuit, gets an injunction, files it and writes place, place across the state. So we have no seat to sale tracking system in Oklahoma.
That's what I was wondering about.
You had mentioned something about other companies coming from out of state to try to buy land and other people coming from out of town, from other states. But I, I know if you don't know the bill for Mississippi, you said you had a threat. But my understanding was to be able to be a grower or producer or have a, you had to be from Mississippi.
Yeah.
Right, three years.
We have, we have a resident, we have a residency requirement too. We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. They pay people off to be straw owners across the board. So we, so we, I'm sorry, I, I, I fielded three calls of those today. We did a search warrant today on that, on what called straw owners. Yeah, but they, they pay somebody a couple thousand bucks a month to be the owner on paper. The organizations do. Yeah, we have a residency requirement too. It's kind of no effect, I'm sorry?
I, I was just going to put that in reference. The school district regularly has to investigate people who are paying individuals to allow them to use their address and come to summer off. That is a regular investigation that our school believes have to run. So someone will pay utility bills or pay rent or empty house, bring their student to school here if they're looking to make large amounts of money. It's plausible. I can't say that somebody's going to do something wrong, but I know that folks are done to get their kids in our local schools. So it would be plausible that someone who can stand and make money might do that. I do have a couple of questions. I hope that answered yours. Just for reference sake, what is the approximate population state of Oklahoma?
2.9 million, almost the same as Mississippi.
2.9, so 2.9 million and out of that.
Three, three, 382,000 cardholders, which is very high. I think a lot of those are actually out of state people getting cards because we have twice the cardholder rate of California. And I just don't think we have that many more weed smokers in California and Oregon too. So, but that, that, that's the number we have. I think a lot of people, because our, our laws benefit that and the amounts are so high for possession, how much they can possess, I think that's why that reflects. But, yeah, we have 382,000 cardholders.
So 2.9 million population, seat to sale is not in effect yet there because of the injunction. How could you identify some of the regulations that Oklahoma requires for security of sites? How does Oklahoma say that a site, either dispensary or a cultivation site, how does the state say that they need to be secured? We have at least that much.
Yeah, gosh, that's a good, that's more on the regulatory side.
We have a second part to that question, there's a lot.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll get that. So the second part of that question is not only how they secure, when those security regulations will put into effect. Okay.
Okay, so the security, I, I think it's like. Okay, so the security, I I think it's like a separate law, there has to be, if there's like transportation has to be where the driver can't reach it with a transporter license. I'll be honest with you, we thought initially people were gonna use the transporter license as a front to move five and ten pounds of weed. Hasn't materialized. There's too much of a, they're moving too much of it to even kind of try to pretend to do that and just kind of ship it all the time. Terms of at the dispensary, there are, there's not a lot of, there's a fence, you have to have a fence around a grow. If it's a, if a person's growing themselves or personally using a car, they have to have something, they can't be seen from an adjacent road. And I think there's one like basically similar to 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 CDS, like we we have like a doctor with a lock cabinet and a lock thing to do that, kind of prevent maybe like shoplifting. I I know specifically where that is, that's more of it in OMA, right? The Oklahoma Medical Marijuana Authority Regulation, that's not ours. But like anything else, I mean, it's a jewelry store, anything else, it's no more secure than jewelry jewelry store or money at a convenience store and the robberies are, we have a dispensary robberies are a huge thing. Or burglars, they drive cars into there and do that, or armed robberies of the dispensary. We have a huge number of those and a lot of robberies at the at the, and those are the ones that are reported. And remember, look, with most of the people, like anything else, I'll tell you, if you ever work drugs, the the greater the amount of drugs or money undercover, the greater the chance of what we call a rip. That you, it's it's gonna be a rip because it's unreported. And so that's one of the things we look for in doing undercover deals or informant deals. And that same is true because these groups are operating with a lot of marijuana that's really not destined for dispensary. And a guy, it'd be good if there's a guy at a farmer's market or some kid with epilepsy, even though the Academy of Pediatrics and American Neurologic Society oppose giving marijuana to artisanal cannabis to children. If you think in terms of those things, there's just not that that big of a demand. They produce quite a bit more. And then there's just, there's a lot of, we have a lot of unreported robberies where guys will do illegal deals and then we kind of hear about it and those kind of do a rip and an armed robbery and, you know, rough somebody up and kind of steal the weed and do that. So there are some security measures. They're not anything that can't be defeated by someone that's armed or a number of people, like they were probably the scripted this weekend, there's four or five of them that were dressed up that robbed two different grows and did armed robberies in the grows.
Okay, one, one last quick question. Okay, for clarification, because I've not read your law. Brett Iredson many times now. But for clarification, what exactly was legalized? Is it medical only and by doctors? Permission that cards are are given, is that? I just want to make sure we're clear that this is a medical, it's not more for all.
Yeah, we, we had solely medical marijuana laws that we passed, recommendation by a practitioner. And let me put medical in quotes, I mean, that's the, but that that was, it's not recreational, but the amounts you can get are just extremely high with doing this, well beyond the decimal levels in doing that. But yeah, we have solely a medical marijuana law.
So that that actually, I have a question about that too, so I'm gonna add on to that. So you mentioned about smell, that you were getting complaints about smell, people driving down the road.
I smell, yeah.
I know one big difference between your Oklahoma bill and ours is gonna be that we do not allow outdoor growing. Do you have any indoor facilities in Oklahoma or is it all out?
No, we've indoor. Now, what are you, what are you calling outdoors? A hoop house, indoor or out?
Secured indoor facilities is what we have in our bill.
Would it would not be greenhouses?
No greenhouses. It has to have a secured enclosed canopy.
Yeah, now, again, with, so, yeah, so we'd have you, yeah, we have the outdoor grows now, again, the real, if you want to know how hoop houses function, there's different levels and grades and they want to do that at certain times and kind of with the weather. The the real, when weed growers can really control the THC content of specific, the strength. If you look at weed, there's kind of demands, okay? And believe me, these are not the kinds we have, or ice cream, gelato, and all these kind of hipster little names and everything will have. It's not medicinal. But but the way, again, one of the reasons THC became so potent in weed is because of indoor grow. So there might be kind of starters and so the the hoop houses sometimes use, we don't have too long of a growing season. Again, we did this roundup, you know, in Oklahoma in February. And we had a hundred and thirty-one thousand plants. Now, a lot of those are indoors, sometimes they'll have like Conex trailers, they'll, they, anything they could buy. We had so many, some of these grows had just a bunch of indoor grows because they, a lot of times with with the hoop houses and everything, they will lose some of that. And so, so we, yeah, we, so if you don't have any outdoor grows, then that that'd be separate from what what we do, because we have some with a bunch of the hoop houses. A lot of those are empty at times because they had, now they'll be, they'll pick up during the the growing season. But ultimately, even in the outdoor farms, there's gonna be buildings there because that's, you know, crowd them in there. That's the one of the biggest problems we have is, and again, I don't know what your regulations say. But when we eradicate, when we have one of these grows that is growing illegally and shut it down, it's a huge problem because there's such a premium on space and they pump, they have, they have to pump carbon dioxide in there and control the lighting and the water and everything with fertilizers and runoff, all those. And so there's, it's very hard because they have all these stringing up to kind of keep the, these real thick female, they want the thick female buds is, it's kind of what they want, has this kind of sticky THC. And so those are the ones that what we'll see and they're just so crowded and there's hard to get through and and do that because they're kind of low hanging and the lights and there's, there's fans and the, gosh, the wiring everywhere is just, we have.
Get back to the original question. Do you get complaints of smell on your indoor facilities or is it all on your outdoor?
Oh, you smell, no, you smell indoor, yeah. Absolutely. It's very, it's very strong. I mean, if you, I I mean, it's the 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 THC content and and what there is the demand for, what they call high grade or hydro, whatever you want to call it, that is extremely strong. And yes, you can smell that and it stinks for, I mean, we have, when guys work indoor grows and they've got to come back, their clothes just stink with the special clothes because of how much it just kind of gets in the clothes, it can't get out.
Yeah, we still have a few more questions.
And I say this, indoor grows are gonna be closer to places versus outdoor farms as well, where the smell would dissipate kind of up in the air, so. I'm sorry, is that for me? I can't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Yep, she says that she's from Michigan.
Okay.
Okay, so Michigan has been legalizing marijuana for a minute. And I agree with stuff here and I go back and forth. It's a, most dispensaries are in a certain location in the city. I'm not smelling weed as I walk down the street or go to the grocery store or pump gas. And I'm, I'm a little confused to think that it's so potent and it's so strong that everywhere you go, this whole community is gonna be weed infected. I don't believe that. So another thing you have to remember, people need relief. My daughter carries a medical marijuana card. When she came down here, she couldn't have one. She has been diagnosed with MS. You, the chronic pain that some, that some people go through and you can take some ointment and put on her back and she's not hurt. Yeah, I may, her, her room may smell like weed. But I'd rather for her to smell like weed than deal with all those painkillers that she's got.
Okay, two things. All right, on that, in in terms of, I I heard most of the question there. I think you said you heard dispensaries in Michigan were everywhere and you couldn't smell. I don't know if you're gonna, I don't think you're gonna smell it from dispensaries, you're gonna smell it from grow houses. That, because that's where there's gonna be a huge concentration of smell. I don't think that's not for dispensary.
They're not growing it out in their backyard. You have to have a facility that they grow.
Yeah, you can, believe me, you can.
In the backyard in the neighborhood. It's controlled. And when they purchase, when they purchase the drug in Michigan, they can go through the drive thru. They order their stuff online. When they purchase it, they have to show their, their ID and their medical card and they get it that way.
Okay, so.
Right through the drive thru again.
Thank you. So I've got a question for you. My name is Lee Rainberry. I'm one of the all of them in here. How many cultivation facilities, did you say Oklahoma has?
Eight thousand one hundred and thirty-seven. Must be a lot of sick people in Oklahoma, huh?
And that's Oklahoma?
Yes, that's just in Oklahoma.
Okay. So do you have any idea how many the state of Colorado has?
Uh, I think they have fewer than we do. I know California has fewer than we do. I know that.
So I believe the active licenses in twenty twenty monthly average for dispensaries and cultivation facilities in Colorado were twenty-seven hundred compared to your over eight thousand on growth facilities alone. What happened in y'all state that made your system such a disaster? I know that part of it, you know, you have to sell tracking systems, which means that you're selling marijuana out of the back door of their facilities without anything, you know, nobody being able to, at that point, you're just taking the water of the growth facility that, hey, we only grew, you know, a hundred pounds today. In reality, they were growing, you know, they were moving two hundred pounds, with a hundred pounds going out the back door. And I know that that caused a lot of problems in your state, so.
Two things, two, two things led to the number. One, Colorado allowed an opt-out, so local jurisdictions could opt-out and two thirds have. So we don't, I I wish my community could opt-out like your community could. I would love it to to for it to be able to do that and to determine whether or not they want these dispensaries and grow houses in the neighborhood. That, that's the the first thing, so that's one. Two, we do not regulate the output. California and Colorado regulate the output. And look, our, our law was done by state question. Like anything else, it's written by the industry that want to promote its pervasive use. And so that's what happens. And oftentimes, what has happened is the target market of this is are are generally typically younger people. It's kind of, as Kevin Sabett wrote a book, essentially that it's the, it's the, it's the big tobacco model over again. They're not gonna make money off someone that wants to use a little bit, off the the habitual kind of daily user. So they they had written, we were kind of a perfect storm, that we don't have a outside money from New York funded the political campaign and it was just written kind of by an advocacy group. And that happened. So to me, those are the two things that that separate. Now, Colorado, Colorado has been a disaster. I mean, I I know the guys, the 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 peer group of my state association, Colorado, are guys I go to. I I see those guys in DC when we meet in national meetings. They run the two black market marijuana groups and and they've seen this for quite some time. We're seeing it kind of to a greater extent because we don't have as many caps. And then the intel, kind of a lot of their people came from Colorado and moved here. They typically, what these groups have done, okay, you can go, they, they, the organized crime moves. All right, I don't, it doesn't matter how many feels about this, this is a fact, all right? Organized crime has moved where these laws are in, to take advantage of where it's new because it's very difficult to catch up. Law enforcement's not there. There are questions, what are we gonna do? Some law firm files a lawsuit to put some kind of thing in place, oh, the seed to sale tracking system, fix this, all this stuff. And then they kind of go there and run it out. So mo- most of our people have kind of come from California and Colorado is is where that's come from. So that's, but the interesting question, that those two are the two things that that varied, that made ours just such a debacle here.
Distributing, what I'm, I want to know. Since Lamar County is not open on this, I assume, what about the people that that the doctors prescribe this stuff to, how they gonna be, is it illegal for the doctors to prescribe you something?
If I can address that, and I was gonna have Pippa Cardy address this, according to the law, the municipality has the option to opt-out of any phase of this. If municipality or the county or wherever it is says, no part of it doesn't do it. That does not mean that they can make it illegal for a local doctor or for a local person who has that doctor's, it's not really a prescription, it's a doctor's suggestion. You know how it goes, y'all have a daughter that invented some. So it does not allow locality to stop that person from obtaining that drink. And then honestly, right here, you're looking at probably, if Lamar County or or a town were to choose to opt-out of a hundred percent, you're looking at twelve miles. I don't know, an oncologist or a pain treatment specialist in our municipality. So those are a lot of the primary physicians that would recommend this. You can't see them here. For folks that had to see them there, you know, you're looking at, that would be if there was an opt-out. We're not even the opt-out, y'all. We are trying to get good information and find out. If it did happen, we could look at your daughter and say, you can't bring that in our town. The law was there. She can have and use it if it supports her. The question is, you know, what phase is gonna be right in this community until? And and I'll tell you, my issue at this point is, Mr. McCarty said, there are a lot of unknowns. We believe that these will be a rule. We believe that it will be reasonable. We think that the intent of the law is this or that. Y'all, these folks that sit up here and vote on these things have to make decisions with your money. And and we're a small town. And I don't think it's a safe bet for us to be anything because the way that these things are decided with the new law, Mr. Cardy said, A G's opinion is litigation. I would rather somebody like Hattie Burger go through that litigation process and get the bucks worked out because they've got a budget part, they've got revenue part, they've got full diamond turkeys. We just need clarity because there's been an awful lot, you know, I I appreciate the support, putting his part in. My concern, sitting in this chair up here, my concern is there are and remain a lot of unknowns. We may get more clarity before the end of the day. But according to the law, and that's what I have to go by, what's written out, we can't tell your daughter. He, if the town chooses to opt-out, we can't say, no, you can't have that. That's not allowable. It it's just one of those things that phases can be selected, it's not a hundred percent. This, let me make sure that I'm answering what he was asking, that I wanted to ask.
We are really not relevant in the city area right here. This is the other portion of my head is, we're outside, we're still in the law form, okay? I'm just a fakes. Well, if you can ask that for us, it's, it's confusing to me that we wouldn't voted on this. I thought it's been a phase and a turn in the direction. Well, I don't think about it, I think it's wrong.
You know, that's a spring court business, they did that. You look at the summer off precinct, it was not in favor in this precinct. I don't know if you live in the summer off precinct. Just, just, I, I, I don't want to say, I, I promise, I'll let you address that. I I will make sure that I finish, you know, there is, there is question there. You know, I've heard people say seventy-seven percent statewide, yes.
Lamar County is seventy-seven. But summer off precinct has five six hundred votes.
Please, he's still got the microphone. Just let me make sure he's done. Is there?
I was gonna say that there were twenty-six hundred votes cast in the summer off precinct. We have a hundred, we have a thousand and thirty registered voters in summer off, right around a thousand and thirty. Twenty-six hundred voters cast votes in summer off precinct, so that's all around somewhere, that's Melville, Carson, all these surrounding areas, Rocky Branch and. Carson, all these surrounding areas, Rocky Branch and Olo precinct, you add those in, took total four about a hundred and sixty votes over four sixty five. We're we're looking at how the area feels and producing the surrounding areas. But if we're looking at how Summerville feels, we would have to take one thousand votes out of that twenty six hundred and figure out how each one of those people voted from Summerville. Because twenty six hundred voters is not the population of Summerville voters. So that's, I mean, so saying that Summerville voted opt out or voted against completely cherry picking numbers, I just, that's my point. Sorry.
Turn turn that microphone on for me. Okay, um, I had a question for the gentleman from Oklahoma about any labs that would test anything that was grown because I I do remember reading something that it was gonna be very much controlled, you know, tested every batch. I mean, there was going to be this full control. It's still being worked out through the legislature, but I thought that the labs were going to be very much involved with, you know, every batch, I guess. So I know you all, you didn't have a C two N program. I don't know how to call it, but did you guys have a lab testing procedure?
So it's um, a couple of things. The uh, I was getting a presentation at the State Prosecutor's Conference in the fall of, gosh. Would have been about two years ago. And you're right, they had the all this, this, this bill said everything had to talk about the potency and what was there, the testing, et cetera. And the uh, the head lab of the OSBI lab, Oklahoma State Bureau Investigation Lab was presented before me. And I mean, those to me, they couldn't do it. So the Oklahoma Medical Marijuana Authority, uh, which again, three and a half years, he's had four directors. All right, in three and a half years. So that that's the continuity they've had. Uh, they couldn't get accreditation online quick enough, so they just kind of gave a waiver. People were selling it without that. Um, to to be what a a fully accredited lab, she said it would take her, starting today, a couple of years to do that. So that's not necessarily my uh, my wheelhouse. I will tell you that the in terms of to say, I'm not going to tell you, say, what the quality of um, the uh, the labs are um, in uh, in in doing that. But uh, I know we we have to list the the milligrams of uh, do you guys allow edibles there in in uh, in Mississippi in this bill?
Yes.
Okay. And edibles, same with edibles is, when you smoke a joint, you burn half the THC. When you take it, then essentially it goes, it goes, what what goes all on board. Well, cops call that, what a chemist would call all being bioavailable. It all kind of goes in there into the system. So like, you know, a, again, a fifty milligram gummy, that look, there are some potential medical benefits. The active ingredient marijuana is tetrazol, can have an alternate, delta nine THC. That is a schedule three, which means you can get a prescription for interregulated milligram for like an appetite stimulant. The recommended daily dose is two, two and a half milligrams a day. Uh, five milligrams a day, which a fifty milligram gummy, you eat one gummy, it's like taking ten full days worth of marijuana all at once. Why kind of, you kind of see these reactions like NBA players on planes and and that like with that guy play for the Thunder, whatever his name was that had done that. So um, I I I will tell you that there are labs in Colorado, this again by a guy uh, that Kevin Sabett wrote a book called Smoke Screen, who's a PhD. He used to work in the National Office of Drug Control Policy. I've seen him speak several times. Um, and they study those kind of in Colorado as well. And there's the contaminants in there and they just haven't been borne out. I I can't tell you, I could comment specifically on the, there hasn't been a check on 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 what the labs are. The lab experts were skeptical that it could have been done up to appropriate scientific standards in in a timeframe, and they couldn't get it done in time. Uh, so I'm not fully sure kind of where uh, where that is. So we have that, but it's not one that I I can't say that. I I have my questions about it, but I I would, I I can't tell you that I I have any hard experience or evidence or any kind of uh evaluation as to kind of how effective that has been.
Can you hear me, Mike?
Yes, I can.
Sure. So um, when the meeting started, on every chair was um, two documents. One was a breakout of all your um there was a second document, and on the top of that, it simply says, facts. F A C T S. Did you write the facts or did you provide this document?
I'm not sure what, I I don't know what uh, I I I've got some uh, I I've got a um, I've got a website that I do that I speak for law enforcement issues and I've got some on criminal justice reform and things like that. I've done some posts. It might be, I can't read that, I'm sorry. I I didn't prepare that. I mean, now that could have come from recent. I've written on this plenty of times. I've I've done white papers, our association. I can't say that that I I I've kind of sent those out in in the past. So I I mean, I I might be the author, I can't see what that is. I did not assemble that, but that might be my stuff, I don't know.
Well, it says right here in bold print, Summerville should opt out of having these type of operations within the city limits. So I'm just curious, whose opinion is this? Is that your opinion or somebody else's opinion?
I didn't write that. I mean, I've, I can, I know what I would do with, when I've I've kind of gone through it in my own vote, but I I don't know. I'm not, I'm not I'm not prepared that or anything, so I don't know. I haven't seen that.
It it was provided from a participant in a high speed, so.
Okay.
With everyone, we have two more questions for you. And then we're going to, I think we have one more guest that has arrived. So um, Michael, if you'll let, will you try to cut that microphone on?
Just, my question is very, very specific.
Okay.
Should take you a lot of time to answer these other questions. So.
Since you guys legalized medical cannabis in your state.
Uh huh.
How many overdoses have you recorded in the state of Oklahoma from medical cannabis?
Uh, gosh, you talking about fatal overdoses or just like overdoses?
Talking about medical marijuana overdoses.
Okay, well, so, well, there's, I know a couple. I know, just in my district. We had a jail death where a lady had a psychotic event. She basically thought um, we we uh, as a DA's office. Yes, yeah, absolutely.
For medical cannabis.
Say that again now?
This, you're talking about a lady that had a psychotic event from medical cannabis and died?
Yes, cardiac arrest from from psychos- psychosis induced from cannabis. Yes, it's on the autopsy. Absolutely, yes. She had cardiac arrest. She, you want to tell, I mean, yes. I mean, I know, I know the thing of the people to say, show me the bodies. It's like saying, you know, you can say, how how many autopsies actually say you die from smoking? I I I I get the punchline, but yes, absolutely. That autopsy said her death was cardiac arrest from cannabis induced psychosis. What now? No, that's all, I mean, now you talking about fatal overdoses or overdoses in reaction, psychotic reactions?
Of people that have ingested too much cannabis and died from it, specifically cannabis, not with other drugs.
No, no.
High from cannabis, other than that one you just listed, which I strongly would, I would really like to see you did that, did date on that, but I'm specifically asking numbers like, is it twelve, is it twenty, a hundred, or do you not know these numbers?
Um, if, I I don't know the number. In terms of uh, now you're talking about like like an overdose. Now, we've had like any, like most places. Once you legalize, then the uh, people that test hot from marijuana fatality accidents goes up. I think it's doubled in Colorado. Now, you were talking about not not killing other people when you're high or psychotic event, when you hurt someone else, talking about just yourself, right?
I mean, and like a prescription drug overdose, you know, you talk about prescription drug overdose, you measure people that die from those X value psychiatric drugs and things that this stuff meant to supplant and and replace in the market. So I'm asking you, compared to those prescription drugs, how many people has medical cannabis killed compared to those prescription products? You have that number for me. And if so, that would love to see this.
Uh, uh, see, I'll tell you this. I, in terms of the individual overdose, I don't, now, I'll tell you this. I I'm a libertarian at heart, okay? If somebody wants to do whatever they want to themselves, I'm a hundred percent for that. All right, I'm a John Stuart Mill libertarian. It's the externalities when you impact other people. And you and and you have that. And so when you talk about people that have actually gone and done robberies, been high death fatality accidents and and killed other people, that's what I'm kind of in in public safety. I'm I don't, I'm not speaking here. If anybody wants to do this for themselves and they they want to use heroin, whatever, I don't care. It's the externalities where it's there. Now, in terms of that, I don't know the numbers. I mean, that we have those numbers. It it's listed and a lot, a lot of times, it's it's kind of polydrug in in the overdose. But I I know of one specifically um, that we just had, it was just a, it was a uh, a use of force. Dale Jeff had a fighter in the jail. And she basically thought she kind of just was told that I don't want to take opiates anymore. I'm going to take medical cannabis instead. She had a psychotic event on cannabis and and went to a casino, took her clothes off, walked around, fought the people to jail, had cardio, you know, and then heart cardiac cardiac arrest with that psychotic event. So that's what I'm talking about there. But in terms of like, the number, I I couldn't give you the number. I mean, it's it's not, it doesn't approach heroin with fentanyl. It's not, it's not even going to do that, not even close, all right? And look, I I can tell you that, I'll say this, cigarettes are going to kill a whole lot more people than heroin this year. They're going to kill ten- tenfold more people die cigarette smoking than fentanyl or heroin. But cigarettes kill more, not because, again, if you want to take, if you want your kid, you'd rather have your kid take a, drag off a cigarette than than bang a fentanyl needle. I get that. They kill more because of the pervasive use. And 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 when you do these kind of number comparisons, you're not talking about the relative use rates. Same thing with alcohol. And I I get the point. I've heard it a lot of times, nothing new. But but that is, but again, when whatever there is, when that increases, you'll you'll kind of see those things. But we've really, I'll tell you this, in terms of psychotic episodes, like people that think edibles are kind of okay, and having bizarre psychotic events. I, that is uncharted. I could not tell you, it has been huge. And I mean, r- read the Colorado Hydra Report on legalizing marijuana, you'll kind of see what what happens there, those those events and hospitalizations.
We've got two very brief questions. Our final guest coming in, I hate to cut you off, we've got two questions. First, Mr. Delancy, since you're done, Mr. Tony, and then we're going to go to our last guest tonight. Uh, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Uh, just really more of a comment than anything. There's a lot of emotion in this room on both sides of the issue. All of the talent. No one's opinion or thought or feeling about this should be discounted. To that end, thank you, sir, for your opinions and input uh, on this matter. And thank you for your service to the public, whether we agree on policy and certain perspectives or not. Uh, and for everybody else in the room, remember, because this, this is hard for me to remember at times, we're not deciding whether to make medical marijuana legal in the state of Mississippi anymore. We're talking about whether Summerville itself will participate in the economy of medical marijuana in Mississippi. I'm not trying to sway you either way, but that statement, just try to remember what we're discussing today and that we're past the discussion of whether this is going to be legal and a part of our state at this point. That's exactly. It's going to be in Summerville regardless.
Yes, I I I have a very brief question. And as John said, I would like to thank you for your service and what you do. Uh, I appreciate law enforcement as much as anybody else. Um, my question would be, according to a, an article in the New York Times, the three biggest problems with the Oklahoma program is that it's allowed to be grown unsecured outdoors. That there is very lax regulation. And that the initial startup cost is as low as twenty five hundred dollars. Would you agree that those are some of the main issues in Oklahoma that prevent you from doing your job and and ceasing a lot of the illegal marijuana that's on the street now in Oklahoma?
Very, very much so, I would. I I I would add that we didn't limit the number of growers. But yes, but 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 that's like you say, it's part of regulation, but I would absolutely agree with that. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And and I believe that, I believe that our legislation is very different than Oklahoma. And so, and yes, and I and I and I realize you didn't write the legislation.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not.
I I I hope and pray yours is different than Oklahoma's, believe me.
Mr. Cooper, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to recognize Mr. Ronnie Shouse or all the congressmen from this district. Mr. Ronnie, if you'd like to come up here and uh, visit with us a bit over this issue, thank you for making the drive. We'll see you tonight.
I'm glad to be here. Summerville, I think I represented you for a while during highways and district day. That's okay. Uh, let me say this, I'm not here to tell anybody anything. Uh, you know, I'd sit back and listen to this gentleman here. And uh, law enforcement with the district attorney, assistant district attorney, I know what they say. I've been involved in that in politics all my adult career, and I've seen the good things and bad things. But what county senior citizens forget to take to medicine, they end up having a heart attack. Opioids have killed more people by multi-billion rich people, supposed to be good folks. They didn't care as long as they get their money. This, this is my concept here. I have faith in Lamar County's police department and sheriff's department. You get to set, the state health department still set the rules. Now, I don't know exactly, but I'm I'm interested enough in trying to do Jeff Davis County. And by the way, Jeff Davis County, Covenant County, no, kind of love if you opted out. Less competition. I mean, figure, and uh, and Summerville's a wonderful team. Basketball, I'm aware of the basketball, because I love the basketball. I did, man. Me and Williams, we just played a lot of ball. But I guess what I'm trying to say is have confidence in your share, work with the police department, work with the sheriff department. Go over the rules and follow the regulations. You just don't open with me. Somehow the guy now, he 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 was from Brookhaven, Mississippi. He was a registered nurse, cited he wasn't happy with the California, learn how to grow cannabis. Because I know it's coming. I know what it can do you for medical reasons. I can't sleep. I'm a terrible sheep. I'm at the up at two o'clock in the morning and have to get up and try to go to work. If I've got something that helps me rest, I'm going to take it. And I hadn't seen it. But I take it. And just logical, then marijuana, if it's so bad now, why couldn't the the Revolutionary War soldiers and George Washington, it was everywhere. I never heard anybody say they got high that day, or they did, and I don't know. But you've got all the controls, and then you think about what Mississippi is. They put it up, the health department's over. They're going to make the rules and regulations. Right now, we don't know anything. And you can either opt in or opt out. I mean, you don't have to stay stuck if you don't think it's, or it should be. I mean, you're trying to kill something that you really don't know. And if it's bad, and I know what they say, well, if he wants to get it, you know, take it over and all this stuff. But I just don't think that's going to happen, not in Summerville. You know, I just don't see it happening. And if you don't, if you think it's wrong, that's your right, which I get it. But I don't, I I just don't see that it's a big ugly beast that's going to devour Summerville in Mississippi. I mean, you know, we've got so many other problems that one on top of having other jobs. Think about expanding Medicaid, we create eleven thousand jobs and they can't do that, but I'll get all that. All you gotta do is expand Medicaid, you got eleven thousand jobs and about two to three billion dollars a year coming in the economy. All right, so, and this could be too. But I'm going to tell you what. I was talking to a guy the other day, the the kid from California, well, he's thirty nine now. He stayed over ten years, grew. It in in California, they're really regulated. They've got so many taxes on it that people are leaving. And a lot of them want to come over here or some other places where it's not so regulated, it's hard to make it. But I think that the potential is great. And the group that I'm talking to in Purnas, they're fixing, they've got one building that's fixing up with about sixteen thousand plants. You gotta have video camera, high security cameras. You gotta wear uniforms with no pockets. And you gotta have really good security. That's a mandate. That ain't no choice.
Mr. Ronnie, who might, who might, I I really, who mandates that? That's what we've been trying to find. Where are those mandates off?
The mandate's in the bill. I mean, in the jurisdictions, I'll find it, I'll find it. But what they're telling me, and I haven't, I got a copy of the bill, but I hadn't read it the whole time. But what they're telling me, you've got to have security cameras in there. You've got to have uh, security there twenty-four hours a day. So, and on and on and on. And I'll try to get that information for you, I'm sure.
That's right. I got, I, I do that over there. I don't, I, I promise, I said the rule, not going to be argued.
Sure.
I don't want to.
No, no.
But, but we've searched and we've researched. I know you had a travel, but kids' parties are represented in the bill. We verified earlier. Those rules don't exist. They've not yet been written.
Well, that, that is to be written by the health department.
And that is correct. They have to be written, but they don't exist. And this board has no option. After they exist, they can see, we are limited by the law. And, and I can, I've carried reading. Limited by the law at ninety days. This board has to make a decision. And then it says, at no time afterward may we change that. Now, if the board says we want to know what's going to be the rule, they can do that and then accept it. But they, you can't not accept it. And then when the rules come out, go, oh, we don't like this, now we're out.
Well, the good thing about it is the rules are going to be set for any license condition. But, I mean, they can't issue a license to know what the rules are. I mean, at that point in time, you can legally get your license. So you've got time to let the rules come out and then make a choice. Make it, make it of a, a decision out of here or, or not knowing there's something right to see what the rules are.
And that's exactly what I hope we can do. That we see what the rules are and then make our decision. Not all about basketball.
With potential regulation, are we worried about this? I mean, that's my real question. What potential regulation are we concerned that the fact was?
Uh, the one section, Michael, and I, I get it. The one section where it says uh, cannabis facility shall be locked or secured. And with security definition, please allow me to finish the security definition. And I've read the entire bill and I looked in the bill under the definition section, it is not defined. So if you follow that and go to government websites, see how things are secured.
Is it your belief that someone would invest a billion dollars into a cannabis facility and lock it for the padlock? Is that, is that a realistic concern? I mean, even if that is a hundred thousand dollars.
Keep in mind, these are cash investments. These are not, I mean.
Go to a bank in Boston. Do we know what, what security they have on the gun shop across from the football field? I mean, as far as security, I mean, I'm just saying, what, what, what is.
We do know that the regulations, we do know, Michael, that all that gun shop and, and Miss Lee can verify this. We do know that the regulations, them to be a licensed dealer, were written before they were able to get that license. So they weren't able to open a gun shop and then secure it.
But do you think Terry would have his guns locked up with a padlock?
I would essentially. Well, well, they, so you've got to have lock doors. They, um, you know, you have to have that vaults, things like that in place. If I remember correctly, from my, my presentations. But, um.
Would anyone, just a question, what I'm asking, anyone here that owns their business that's worth fifty thousand dollars, would they go leave it up?
Michael, there are people in this town that don't lock their doors at night. I can't speak to what an individual or business owner can do. All I can say is that the regulations are not written. And, and I think that it's fair to the people that we know what we're agreeing to. That's all I'm saying.
My concern is real wisdom peers is all I'm, my, my concern is that we're facing this all realistically. Concerned to not like the fact that someone's going to leave their front door open in their million dollar warehouse. And that's all I'm, would suggest is that we. Uh, you said that it was locked and secured.
Locked or secured and then legal terms. Locked or.
Leave it at that base, right? Oh, I apologize. I'm just moved here a year ago. Uh, so I'm not really buying into this. But if I can suggest, if that's all that's stopping it, and I'm not, I mean, on our hands, I have smoked fifteen years of pot. Establish it. If y'all afford it, but the security measures was stopping it, establish it with the fullest extent of security. Cameras, guards, dogs, whatever, bear traps, I don't care. Establish it to the fullest extent. If that's what it takes. And then once, and then once everything's established or figured out, then you can relax it or keep it as is.
I think I would be agree with the most people with Summerville. People that go into Summerville already have a planning state of the art security system. That's not even an element.
And that is a great suggestion. And we've had some discussions about that. There is one line in the legislation that says we can't create a county or a municipality, cannot create an ordinance that is not, that is not in agreement with the law. Now, that's probably going to be tested through the agency's office through a series of opinions. That brings us to Charles. Arthur litigation.
When we were talking about Oklahoma and it really, really lacks, nothing. I just want to read this. Oklahoma's security, each building shall require a security alarm system that upon unauthorized entry shall transmit a signal directly to its central station protection company or local state police agency that has a legal duty to respond or a twenty-four hour control station operated by the registered. That's Oklahoma's known sand.
And that's in their lax system. And we don't have that.
They have no seat to sell type. Which is what manages the black market sales. Oklahoma has zero seat to sell track. That part cannot be overstated. Everything the guy said was practically used up because of that fact, because we would not have any problems. They able to see the sale. I have friends that work in Oklahoma. It's due to be implemented in August of this year. And it changes their entire operating system, how they have to manage different products.
And Lee also mentioned about insurance. If you're not going to be able to get the building insured, insured without, so whether or not.
The law.
Right.
Those insurance companies have already regulated it effectively in every state, city, providing public. If that does turn effect, the very strict regulations that expect it annually by the insurance companies as well as the agent. It's a very stringent process. I know that it involves security systems. I know that it involves locks. I know that it's um, has to be simple and monitored. And there's several other regulations. I'll be able to get those to you probably by middle of next week.
Mr. Ronnie, would you like to talk to this town?
I forgot. I'm sorry. I thought I should be late. But uh, first of all, they're not going to dissuade anybody. You've got, you've got to be specific. We're talking about messing it down. I would be a fine house for a building. Just three hundred thousand dollars. Three hundred thousand dollars.
Can you keep down the, you know, keep down the chat? I'm just talking about all of the chat.
Okay, okay. But uh, right now, the group in Prentice, they're from the coast. They're finishing a house now. They're going to have seven hundred thousand dollars. It's going to have, they're putting security in it. They're putting uh, rules and regulations. Nobody, not just because you want to go there and look, don't mean you can go look. I mean, it's going to be tight. And uh, and then I asked, well, what would a five thousand square foot building of two or three tier? He said, you're looking at one point five, one point eight million dollars. So the people is going to loan you that money unless you got to bury it somewhere. You're going to have to have some.
Yeah, yeah.
And uh, I know that when, in twenty twenty, when they, what was that, twenty twenty six, first tax? Uh, it was like a minimum of four hundred and fifty dollars per square foot, no dollar ceiling. And that was, I mean, that's, that's pretty good. I'm trying to eat. But that's huge. I mean, and you're not going to do anything under. Well, if you're talking about, and today, frankly, it's probably like two or three weeks after.
When would a job created in six hundred thousand basically, that's. Earn relevance.
So there's a couple of things I'd like to nudge on. These positions, the job, are not low paying jobs. Even how it's still, how it's changing, you know, these are being improved, we're trying to well, in most cases. And these have been not playing well to the upper table. Um, these aren't minimum wage jobs that we create.
Starting wage is fifty dollars.
Opportunity in this industry.
Yeah, starting. Starting wage is fifty dollar now.
But my concern with opting out is you only got so many facilities that can go up.
Yep.
On, you know, on the roadside of things and maybe that's in that nature. So if we opt out and we decide eight, nine months, not going to opt out, it's always going to build that kind of administrative. We know it's all, you're not going to get it. You may, you may get one, maybe, but it's what's going to bring you here.
The risk has gone drastically up. Supply and demand, you know, when they begin, there's no, beginning of the industry, there is no supply. So everything you do is needing uh, people. It's like I try to tell people, imagine porn has been illegal your entire life. And all of a sudden it's legalized on a state by state basis, acting entirely within your state. It could be, yeah, economic benefits that would hurt that. And this is something that's arguably worth way more than porn. My dad had a blueberry business. Somebody said he did twenty tons one year and he bragged about how he made eleven cents a pound. And the height of his success, he made eleven cents a pound. This industry brings in about two thousand to eight thousand dollars a pound. And you're talking about a pound that's created by sixteen square feet of space every four months or something along those lines. It's, 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 the, the numbers are out of this world. And there is the number one job creating industry in the country right now. There is nothing comparable.
I have a question for you.
Okay. I've been studying this for a long time, very long.
So, okay, we're pretty now that everybody that is in this room has all these stacks and is talking about the town. I've got a fourteen month old son.
They have very good filtration systems right now.
Okay, the filters.
They have these, and these buildings are essentially like Yessir's works. Have you ever seen our, the building, probably like what our baseball field house looks like. It's an enclosed building. And they have heat humidifiers, humidity incipience through the roof is outranging. This stuff has to be thrown locally. Mold and fungus and things like that. So these things are controlled more tightly than your home in terms of growing. Because they have, they have, they have. I mean, there's more time maybe of, when you cut the plant, it's maybe if you were to walk around the perimeter of the building in life, it's similar. But there's, there's plenty of things you could have that.
There's not going to be, there's also not going to be a problem.
It's not going to be something that you walk down Main Street, go, oh, this facility is pretty right.
All right, so it's nice. We've got about fifteen minutes left. Stay on crack.
Okay. We've talked a lot about, are we going to get taxes from the growth facilities? Are we going to get one percent interest as well? Spencer, I just wonder if I should mind, as a business owner, we're going to get, we would potentially get a ton of money. The numbers that Ronnie was talking about on the cost of a growth facility or a manufacturing facility or a testing facility. That's going to get property tax every year. County's going to come through there and they're going to say, oh, that life were bad and that life.
Yeah. That, that, that's what we say. And then now we're talking to people, these buildings are pretty hard to make sure they get taxed perfectly. They're, they're going to not really, not anybody's property taxes, like they need to hold.
Yes.
I mean, none of these people, no offense, was the year, simply a hook for whatever this was the year, right back in the long run.
Yes, I, I know. They're going to tax, they're going to tax with fire apples. And that will go back to Summerville. Property, uh, percentage of property taxes goes to the school district, does it not?
One positive about that, that has been, add on to what Tommy said. One positive about that, it is explicit in the law that tax breaks are disallowed for this industry. So whereas we have a lot of industry in the last few years, we saw several examples, especially in North Mississippi, where industry would come in and they could get tens of millions of dollars in tax breaks set up. Um, those tax breaks are disallowed for this industry. So.
That, that, that would be at, at the very minimum, if we attracted a business, that would be a financial boom in the town. The other part of the devil, the last thing I have to say is we have, in, in terms of getting in early and attracting a large business to our area, we have the largest solar farm in the state of Mississippi. Am I correct? Uh, right outside of town. That is a marketing tool, green energy for green jobs that you could market and sell for fire apples. They're, we're getting ready to build another eighteen hundred acre solar farm just down on Locktown Road that will also feed into our city. We are sitting on a gold mine there that we can use to attract not ju, not just medical marijuana businesses, but other businesses to our town, to our community. There are people looking to, to put that green energy stamp on their product every day of the week. And we would be crazy in this town.
The role of this town is to create jobs, as you said, career jobs. This town, I have, I have friends that college degrees that work at Ace Hardware. It's not like Ace Hardware, but we need career jobs. I have a son-in-law that works offshore and had the potential to get a job in this town that's a career job. This is an industry that's going to be exported to the entire state and eventually possibly the entire southeast or the entire country. And the growth potential for such an industry or exceeds that of a restaurant or a gas station or anything that, because that requires people to come to Summerville to purchase. If we're exporting things, how many jobs could we create? We have a thriving exporting business in this town. And you're talking about, okay, let's talk about twenty jobs in this town. What does twenty jobs do for this town? You've got twenty people that are going to take a lunch in a row.
Twenty thousand dollars.
You need to talk about twenty, yeah, the top level is like a four billion dollar a year, the bottom level thirty thousand dollar a year. You're talking about people in this town, twenty people that are going to be eating pihetis. They're going to go to the local eatery for lunch. So they're going to shop at Ray's on their way home. They're going to build houses in this town that are going to buy nutritional teas. What is, what is the buy power of twenty people in this town relative to the other businesses? You know, every business in this town supports every other business. And I fully, people told me, we should look into Jeff Davis. I don't want to put this in Jeff Davis County. I want this in Summerville. I want my neighbors to benefit from the jobs. I want people, I want this lady's daughter to be able to get their products without having to drive fifteen miles down the road. Maybe, you know, if you're looking at the price of cannabis, it's up to sixty dollars per daily amount. Um, you know, if you're buying a week at a time, you might be spending four hundred dollars. You can afford to go and spend four hundred dollars for a weekly supply. You know, I mean, people need access in their own communities. And they need to benefit from something, Jackson is going to be importing revenue from Summerville if we allow this to happen. Jackson's going, Jeff Davis County is going to be importing revenue from Summerville. We're going to be just paying money to Jeff Davis County in Jackson. Why not bring that money to our own backyard?
And think positively about it. So for those that maybe are against it, try not to operate in fear like that dude Brian did to us when his first statement was, this is a run for black market activity.
Which is absurd. They, the numbers.
That's not accurate. That was his opinion.
Michigan had.
That's what happened in Oklahoma.
Oklahoma is a warning. Michigan had a medical program. Michigan had a medical program, and they had three hundred thousand patients in their medical program. And Michigan had their medical program, they legalized recreation within two, three years after that. Their medical program dropped by about twenty-five thousand of patients. That's all the effect, medical cannabis does not affect the black market, that's not the goal of medical cannabis. Adult use, that is the whole goal of adult use, but that is not the goal of medical cannabis.
Do we have, uh, Mr. Perry, I have some information that she wants to provide, and I wanna give her some finish to do that before we come to our closing. Um, but I think that we'll go ahead and let her start that now, which folks may have questions or two for you, and you give us, I think, passes to everyone.
I, I did as many copies as I could. And you'll see at the top, um, says green, my, my computer did not print out in green ink. So that's why it says that, but doesn't show that, but you do see the red. Um, so it still can show you on the balance of how many answers were for and how many were against. Um, this was an anonymous survey that we only posted on our Summerall Main Street Association page, and I believe our mayor shared it. Anybody else that shared it would have been from Summerall, so even though I can't tell you who took those surveys, I can tell you they were only looking at Summerall interest. Um, to get to that survey.
It's very similar to the state results, it's like seventy-six to twenty-four. Always identical to the city voting in that town.
Yeah, and that, there, it is, um, still going and still live, and I'll leave it up as long as I can. Um, at four o'clock, it was seventy-eight to twenty-two percent, um, in favor of staying in. Yeah, that was two. Yeah, that was at two hundred and forty-two responses, we had about seventy-eight percent. I did not, it was two hundred and forty-two responses at four o'clock today. And it was seventy-eight percent to twenty-two percent. To stay in, yeah. And then what you see there, there was an option, um, in that survey to leave an additional comment if you want, and that's what is printed on those forms. So I wanted you to see actual information of people that really took that survey. Um, not coming from me, I'm not an expert on this topic, so I'm just kinda presenting things to y'all. I, I can take it down anytime y'all want me to, yeah. Sure, sure, yes. So I just wanted to let me know. Yes, I wanted y'all to have that, and I, I will send y'all the links to look at that anytime you want to, you can pull up the results of the survey, and that is public information, anybody can do that. Um, the other thing that I wanted to say is there's, I can reiterate what's been going on. Um, people that knew much more than I did were speaking tonight, I thank you for bringing, um, people too. Um, it was not just me that brought in speakers, our whole Main Street team and several other people from the community recommended people, that's where we got that information from. And then I want to, um, also say. Take into consideration what everybody said tonight, and also keep in mind that if we do stay in. Your board mayor can still regulate zoning stuff, you can put ordinances up to say what kinda signage those businesses are allowed to have. Um, you can do more than what's in that bill based on local, um, zoning and ordinances. And I, I would personally like to see y'all do that, even in addition to what the bill says.
I did have a question about the survey, I had a deal with this school district board, so, uh, question is. On that survey, you have a way to track, um, say that one person goes in and completes it repeatedly, is that tracked? Or are you getting one response per respondent?
Um, I could have chosen that as an option, and I could have chosen you to have to fill in an email address or have to fill in a name, we chose not to do that. So that more people would be honest and a feedback.
This town is speed, when somebody log.
It's, it does if it's, um, from a Google account.
Okay.
It will not let them do twice from a Google account, but other than that, no, I did not have a way to track it.
Did that clarify?
What did you totally do, what, you wondered something?
Two hundred and forty-two.
Yeah, it only charged you with from the big house. Sixty comments, individuals.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I've seen those things done before where, where they were shared outside and they were.
I have one last question, and I'm a liar, I apologize. If the board, if the board does vote to opt out. Um, and then decides to opt back in later, what is the.
Would that's the whole guy.
With the. With the, with the, no, if, if the board, if the board opted out. And then decided later on down the road to opt back in. What is, what is, what is, would the mayor have a veto over when you have to have four votes to opt back in?
Yeah, so maybe you don't wanna decide.
And I'm, I'm just asking.
It's a simple vote at that point, it will follow the same rules. You know, technically, if the board votes to opt out right now, I can veto. It's a vote of the board, and it follows the same rules as any other vote, a vote to opt back in will follow those same exact rules too.
That's what I thought, so if, as it stands right now, if the vote, if the board, the board would have to have a second, uh, uh, motion and a second. And then another vote to opt out.
If five people. Begin.
And there's no, there's no veto of that.
There could be. The board could override that.
Change town hall perfectly, and we got three votes for it, and Joel vetoed it, which I would. If the board votes to opt out, we can collect two hundred signatures and have a vote within sixty days for reverend and vote to opt back in. That's the way the bill is written, so, um, it's ultimately, that's the process we have to do, that's the process. It will still have the same goal, but. Well, the problem with the opt-out, I have. It's not so, it's, you know, it puts us up to June first, and license, which is when licenses go out, so all these other businesses. They're great, they're broken grounds, they're failing to be planted in the summer. All of our facilities would be starting, potential in July, starting to break ground after they've spent one. Twenty-five thousand on license, that's just sitting there while they're building up. And that's, um, it becomes a burden, so they. The investors, I'm trying to just see, you know, up around you, Jeff Davis County or Ronnie County, they. And that's the result, and then, you know, it would like to track them back tomorrow.
So there's another one I'd like to make on this as well, it's confirmed, I wanna say it's what, fifteen hundred foot? This doesn't have to be between each dispensary?
One thousand.
Between dispensaries is fifty.
Between dispensaries.
Yeah, so if you put off a dispensary, there can't be another one within fifteen hundred feet. There's only so many locations in this town that you can actually get, so it's because of that number of places.
It's a forty thousand dollar for first year for a license, and then twenty-five thousand dollar a year after that. So the number of people that are known for dispensaries in this town.
You realistically would probably get anywhere from thirty-eight acres.
It would make the town. One, two.
Yeah, so you could realistically only get. That, 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 that's all you could allow by the regulations currently laid out in the bill.
And I doubt like.
It's not like Main Streets that have become, a place to combine pot.
So that's an actual overdose number, so then one. That one overdose number was, was what I would like to.
Y'all, do y'all have any other questions?
I want to thank everybody who is here tonight, who have provided you with this, and asked you questions. We didn't wanna make any decisions, y'all, this is, this is where we live, I know Giles is tough to come by. I've been associated with Summerall, this is twenty-five years, the only time that I have ever had a job in the town of Summerall, Mississippi. I was employed by the town of Summerall, Mississippi. I had driven anywhere from thirty-five minutes to two hours for my entire career, which is about twenty-five years at this point. To have work, I know that work is an issue, but I also know that people move here because we have a great community and there are a lot of positives. This board is charged in making decisions to continue the great things we have. This could be a part of it, okay? But gathering information and making wise decisions is something that if we're doing our jobs and taking them seriously, we have to do. Y'all have been a part of that tonight, I appreciate it, you give us things to listen to and think about. I hope that you've gathered some information from, from the speakers, and, and, you know, feel free to reach out to me. I am here, I'm an evening type person, Johnny needs something to sleep, I don't need anything to sleep, because I usually go to my first job until I'm done. And then my second job until I can't stay awake. So, hook me up in the evenings, if you wanna talk, I'll be glad to. Thank y'all, and, uh, we can be social along the way out, the official part of the meeting, we will adjourn.
If you have no questions, if you have no questions, reach out to your, we got five of them, reach out to your specific office, all any one of us. And when we want to have to listen to any kind of.
I'll make like a point out, we're talking about deep decisions being made that our senators and legislators spent an entire summer. Having special hearings on this very issue, so I, I would encourage every single one of you who have concerns to watch. The special hearings that our senators and legislators watched before they passed and voted on this bill. This bill had four, or maybe a total of seven negative votes, was the largest concern of each state.
How's it going, Keith?
Good, how you doing?
Sophia, um, thank you again, all that you did and everything, I know you were just saying a lot, I appreciate it. I appreciate your help, you know, the setup, uh, it means a lot to us, that you get the information out, and that's all I wanted to. It's good for us, my information, and, you know, not, or again, talking about this, I just wanna get that piece out of this fucking, I appreciate you doing all of that. Right, okay. I sure will. Alright, I appreciate y'all, thanks a lot.